You guys like to look at this register? Are you? Have you seen it? We'll pass this down this aisle for a second. This will take us a few minutes, so if you'll bear with us for a minute. Is it the list of them? The numbers are the same?
Yes. The warrant register has the payroll in that one.
Okay. I'm not seeing anything out of...
Just the one that she sent out on this email.
Has it, but it's not?
And I had looked through this yesterday.
I did too.
February 1st? Oh, yeah. It's the past minutes.
Yeah, it's not the... Yeah, that's attached to the minutes from... Yeah. If we end up not passing the bills, what happens then? We get...
Gets paid.
Nobody gets paid? Huh.
Big one next time.
Yeah, you're right. You're right. Comfortable moving on with this? Okay.
Aye.
Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the bills.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Sellers? Mr. Perks the 2nd? Any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? If not, that's approved. We'll go on to council comments. Mr. Lynch?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Okay, Mr. Otley? Mr. Perks?
Not a thing, Your Honor.
We're moving fast. Mr. Welling?
I have nothing tonight. Just a couple things. You know, last week I didn't have any, so I got to make up for it this week.
You got to make up for it? All right, go ahead.
Hey, I want to wish all our teams well in regional. They're coming up, the basketball teams, girls and boys. Also the speech and debates. And yesterday I actually had the opportunity to listen to the state of the state. A lot was brought up on mental health and suicide and prevention. And we're getting that time of year. It just seems that winter drags on and that it's... We're seeing more and more people suffer mental illness. I'd just like to really encourage people to be mindful of their neighbors and their friends. And there's a post on Facebook today of a young man. And just the way it was written, I'm sure it was a suicide. So it's hard to see young lives snuffed out when there's... In time when things should be going good for them. So just be mindful of others around you.
Thank you. Sounds good. Mr. Welling? Well, I don't think I have anything to add. So we will move on under Republican hearings or special orders. We do have some appointments to consider. I guess I'll just throw these names out there, and then if there's concerns, we can discuss them individually or whatever. Is that okay? Does that sound appropriate? We've got three appointments to consider tonight. And I'd like to put forth the names of Lisa Cox to be reappointed to the tree board for a three-year term to end January 2025. Summer Bin to be also appointed to the tree board for a three-year term, also to end January 2025. And Tiffany Sager to be appointed to a three-year term on the preservation committee. Also, that term would end January 2025. If somebody would like to make a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lynch with a motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Otley seconding. Is there any discussion? Discussion? No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Thank you. Appreciate those individuals being willing to help us in those... On those boards. We do have a consent agenda item. It's a street closure requested by Mr. Pence for car show. Mr. Pence, come tell us what you've got in mind to do.
What's up, fellas? Spend a minute. Yeah, we had a lot of people asking us about the car show.
Excellent.
I guess it brought a lot of people downtown, and it was a nice environment. And we've had people calling us out of Salt Lake, Logan, you know, Ogden areas, wanting to bring their cars to town. So we started talking about it a little bit more, figured I'd go talk to the Main Street businesses. And it's never been this easy, to be honest with you. We have people coming out of the woodworks that want to sponsor. We have... Every business on Main Street is just absolutely excited about it. You know, in years past, we've had some people kind of concerned about closing the road or putting cars. Nobody this year. Absolutely, everybody's on board. So we just figured, you know, let's bring some money to downtown. And I know you guys got some new faces in the offices and things. And we talked to the Main Street folks, and they're really excited and they want to help. And so we just would like to shut her down and do a car show on Main Street that day.
I think I got an email the other day, or a messenger message, I guess it was, inviting me to be in the bike race.
Right, right. Because I...
But this year I want a bike that actually pedals.
Well, I mean, excuses are excuses. You know, you beat me once, but you're not going to get me again. You know what I'm saying? I'm getting pretty good.
All right.
But yeah, so they've invited the police department and the fire department to interact with that as well. We have a lot of people that are going to be coming to give some stuff away as far as, like, matchbox cars and things like that for the kids. We have a ton of vendors. It's just makes me feel kind of bad with coronavirus and everything, which is too hard to try to figure it all out. And I didn't want anybody getting sick, so we just kind of stepped away for a minute. When we stepped back, we started to realize that there was a lot of people who are in desperate need for a little boost, and they would like to get out, they'd like to put their businesses out there. I think right now, as it sits, we've got them all on hold till after the city council meeting, but there's probably 20 or more vendors that are trying to get on Main Street. And we've told the businesses on Main Street, there is no charge. We're wanting them to come out and set up and sell some stuff. And like I said, again, it made me feel kind of bad because we went into Mother Mays. Marvin and them were almost emotional about it when we told them we were going to do it. They told us in years past they actually make more money on that day than they do a lot of times at cowboy days. So, you know, I just think it would be a great opportunity for us all to get out. I did have a couple of questions for you. We have it listed from 6:00 in the morning to 3:00 in the afternoon. Usually when the car show's over, everyone leaves fairly quickly. I don't know if we should have put a little bit more of a buffer on there, maybe extend it out just a little bit. But I do know that Brew Fest is happening, and I think it starts at 1:00 or 2:00 in the afternoon. And another thing I didn't file on there was an open container. We don't sell alcohol at the car show, and we usually don't have a lot of people walking around with alcohol or any of that kind of stuff. But I know in years past, we've actually done that just to ensure that people were safe. And I'm not sure if Cates was going to do that because Rachel down at Cates usually does that street, you know, thing for the open container. I'm not sure if you guys want to add that to that, just to be safe, or what you guys think personally on that.
I guess I'm not sure. What is the process? I mean, I guess we've got time that if we want to include an open container request, we've certainly got time to accomplish that.
Perfect.
So I don't think there's a big deal there. As far as the extension of the time here, what does that... What does something like that look like? Do we need to stretch this out, or do we need to... What's...
Just in your motion, specify a couple additional hours, you know?
Does that work?
That's fine, yeah. I just, like I said, we tried to close out and try to get most of the people out of there at the start of Brew Fest. It just ensures safety of some of these cars. Some of these cars are in excess of $100,000 plus. And so in years past, we've had around 200 cars on Main Street, and they clear out fairly quick, which is crazy. We've never really needed the additional time, but I just want to make double sure that we have the time to clean up the street, make sure everything's put away, everything's... And then we help the Main Street businesses pack their stuff up as well, too. So I don't know if we're going to have a lot of participation in that. I want my staff to, you know, be able to help them get their stuffs put away as well. But usually, it's not an issue, but I just wanted to make sure we had enough time.
Chief Vanish, do you see an issue with that? Just with that extension or whatever?
Yeah, we had an issue with whatsoever.
Okay. Mr. Robinson, do you see anything, any problems with that?
No.
Okay. Well, I guess what I'm thinking is, is let's go ahead and have Cates or apply for an open container permit request. I don't know that we can add that to this right now.
Right.
I think that's probably a little problematic. But I think if we, like Mr. Bowles said, if we want to... If somebody wants to make a motion to just consider another, maybe to 5:00 on the street closure permit. Any questions for Mr. Pence before we move on?
I'm just excited for doing it.
Yeah, I'm too.
Yeah, there's a lot of people. I actually, like I said, I feel kind of bad about it because we were just too worried with coronavirus. There was just too many unknowns. And we are a business. We're not a nonprofit, so we buy our own insurance. We, you know, we do a lot of stuff, and I hate to see people get sick. You know, me and my wife did get the coronavirus. It is very serious. And we do have a lot of elderly folks that do come to the car shows from long distances. And so we just wanted to ensure everyone's safety, and we just couldn't. In the last couple of years, it's just been too crazy. But now I'm starting to feel a little more comfortable, and so are all our volunteers and things. And, you know, I think we could really make this work really well for everybody.
Okay. Excellent.
Right on. Thanks, guys.
I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I'll make that motion, extending the hours to 3... To 5:00 p.m., from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Got a motion by Mr. Otley, seconded by Mr. Sellers, to approve our consent agenda with an extension to 5:00 p.m. rather than the 3:00 p.m. that's labeled on the actual application. Any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Good luck.
Thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
Q. We have no unfinished business, so we'll go to our new business, and we'll start there with ordinance 21... Or 22, excuse me, 2201. Mr. Bowles, read that title for us, please.
Your Honor, this ordinance of the city amends Section 9-3A of Chapter 9 Fire Prevention of the Evanston City Code to adopt the 2021 edition of the International Fire Code.
I assume this is a similar effort as we did with the regular building code, is it not? Just to give us a chance to...
Right. We're... As you know, we periodically update our codes. And this code is the fire code, and it's found in Chapter 9 of our city code. It's not included with the other building codes, and we need to do this. Anything that needs to be said?
Anything we need to know about this? Is there any significant changes from...
This is a three-year cycle they go through. And it's just a housekeeping item to keep up with most of it.
Okay. Doesn't... Isn't going to say everybody's house got to be sprinkled or retrofitted for...
We'd love that.
I'm sure you would. It might not be a bad idea, but so... Okay. And I guess we need a sponsor. Since this being an ordinance, we need a sponsor. Somebody... Mr. Welling, you're going to sponsor? I'm sorry? Okay. Mr. Welling here said two, so I got his name first. That's okay. But then I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2201 on first reading. Mr. Lynch will make that motion. Is there a second? Mr. Welling's seconding. Any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That is approved on first reading. Thank you. Resolution 22-12. Mr. Bowles, please.
Under this resolution of the city adopts the 2021 International Building Code, the 2021 International Residential Code for one and two-family dwellings, the 2021 International Existing Building Code, the 2021 International Mechanical Code, the 2021 International Fuel/Gas Code, the 2021 International Plumbing Code, and the 2020 National Electric Code pursuant to Section 7-7 of the Evanston City Code.
A lot of changes, Mr. Lickety, please. Explain all that to you, sweetie.
Code by code?
In five minutes or less, explain all that to us.
This is what the ordinance we previously have done to work towards is so we could adopt more easily the codes. Like Mr. Overy said, they're on a three-year cycle. They rewrite, update. And we're in a joint jurisdiction with the state, so we have to do it in... As they do it. And so this resolution will simplify the process. Did you... Dennis, did we want to mention that exemption of the Section 31?
Sure. Explain that.
So we're exempting Section 313...
If you look at subsection B, the International Residential Code for one and two-family dwellings, we exempted there from Section R 313-2, which stills with automatic fire systems.
For residents.
Yeah.
Much to Mr. Overy's chagrin.
He's going to say it. He's going to say it.
Any questions for Mr. Lickety before we move on?
We had Dominion Energy here requesting us to put an ordinance into... Does the fuel/gas code address who can install anything like that?
The fuel/gas code just is the... Outlines what they need to follow as they install, but it doesn't require anybody to be licensed to... Right?
Person, okay.
Right?
That would be a different effort, I guess, on our part, wouldn't it?
It would.
Yeah. Probably not a bad idea, but I think we probably... Right. Or others. Any other questions for Mr. Lickety before we all entertain a... I guess, is there an introduction on this resolution? Mr. Sellers with a motion? Second. Mr. Otley seconding. Any discussion?
No huge major changes this week?
No. Very rarely are there huge changes. Just...
Any further discussion? There's no further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you. Resolution 2213. Mr. Bowles, read that title for us, please.
Your Honor, this resolution of the city authorizes the execution of a contract for services with the Evanston Rodeo Series and Wyoming Nonprofit Corporation.
Excellent. Mr. Bounce, do you want to tell us what we've got in mind here? I think most... We met with Mr. Bounce in work session the other day, but we're talking about reinstituting the rodeo series, which is another thrilling...
Well, that's better than resurrecting.
Well, I almost used the... I almost said resurrecting, and now that's probably not.
You're alluding to that it was dead. It was close to it, I guess, but...
I caught myself before.
Well, after a two-year absence, we've determined to go ahead and to reinstitute the Evanston Rodeo Series. And it's quite an undertaking because of the absence. In years past, beginning back in '93, we've asked the city for support to be able to put on the rodeo series, and they have done that very generously and so forth. And in 2019, we had an agreement with the city to be able to have funds to help us with the rodeo series. And we had intentions of going through with the 2020 season. We had all of our contractors, stock contractors, announcers, entertainment, everything under contract for our 2020 season. And of course, COVID kind of interrupted that. And with the mandates coming from the state and so forth, as far as the assembly numbers and that, we decided that it would be better if we just forewent... Forego or forewent that... The rest of that season. And fortunately, we were able to get out of the contracts that we had with all of those people. They were very gracious to do that. Our budget year is different than the city's budget year, and the funds that were allocated to us in 2019, we took three of those payments out of the four and to take care of all of our obligations in 2019. We still had one payment remaining, and I came to you, to the mayor, and asked if we could roll that over to the 2021 year, which was agreed upon. And then 2021 happened and/or didn't happen again. So with that being said, we've come to you, and we come to you tonight to ask if we could ask the city for some funds to be able to jumpstart our activities again for this year. And we did get a late start. But that being said, we do... We've made great strides in the last few weeks as far as getting all of our people in line. Stock contractors, announcers, we've got those all in place. Now, entertainment for two of the three weekends are in place. And so... And also approaching some of the past sponsors. They've been very anxious, I guess, or positive about helping us again. And so we're positive about that.
Excellent.
So that's the purpose of coming to the council, Your Honor, tonight, and asking for funds to be able to get us started again for this year. And then we'll have a better idea of what's going to happen next year to come back and renegotiate with you for the upcoming year.
Excellent. Well, I think I was thrilled to hear that you were going to have another go at it, and hopefully it's raving success. Any questions for Mr. Bounce before we move on with this?
Weekends have been scheduled, so...
There are three weekends. We're going to start June 10th and 11th. Go ahead.
It's June 10th and 11th.
And July 1st and 2nd, and July 22nd and 23rd. Now, of course, there's activities that'll be happening with the city. And in the past, we've been able to do a joint venture with the city and sharing some crossover things as far as activities there. I know in the past with the Parks and Rec, we have offered a two-for-one ticket package for anybody that attends the city activities and so forth. And it's been a benefit to them and us. You know, it's better to have full grandstands with half the tickets than it is to have half the people in it with full tickets. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Yeah.
Looks better.
It's funner when you have more people. That's all there is to it. But no, it's been... It's been good to be able to work with the city and their activities as well, and we plan to do that.
Excellent.
So...
Good enough. Well, is there an introduction on this resolution? Mr. Welling with a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Mr. Perks with a second. Any discussion? Discussion? No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will go on to Resolution 2214. Mr. Bowles, please.
Your Honor, this resolution approves and authorizes the final plat for the Ruiz addition, a subdivision within the city of Evanston.
Mr. Jacobson?
So the Ruiz addition is located... Let me advance the slide here. Okay. This addition is located at an extension of Sixth Street. This is the southern end extension that includes the Cul-de-sac. As Sixth Street makes the band around the Paul Field Park, Steel and Pete Road, and Seventh Street, that's just... So this addition proposes to subdivide or resubdivide Lot 2, Block 1 of the Sepulveda addition. That was approved several years ago. It's large, about a one-and-a-half acre piece, and they're proposing to subdivide that into two lots. There are some buildings that you can see that may be on one lot. None of them are, that I'm aware, are being used as a residential purpose. The purpose of subdividing these is develop each lot for residential use. So this is the proposed subdivision. So Lot 1, Block 1 of the Ruiz addition is a 1.010 acre size, and Lot 2, Block 1, is a .615 acre size. This area is located in a medium-density residential developing zoning district, and there's not a minimum lot size requirement for that zoning district. Lot size is determined by... Requires a minimum of 3,000 square feet of usable open space per dwelling unit. So the lots that are being proposed, they are fairly large, so they're adequately sized for the zoning district. There are some utility easements that are existing, and they are highlighted in this kind of orangey-ish color. Those are 10-foot-wide utility easements that were platted as part of the Sepulveda addition. Those easements will continue over to this. The only change that this new addition is proposing is to widen this to include a 20-foot access and utility easement to access Lot 1, Block 1 of this subdivision.
That access is what will access Lot 1? There's no... That I'm familiar with, there's no other access into Lot 1 other than that access. Is that correct?
There's secondary access off the alley. But it's a fairly narrow alley. You can't get any larger equipment, such as fire trucks, and that down the alley. So with this proposal, we are looking at a cross-lot access easement on Lot 2 to access Lot 1 to the north.
So I guess if you're looking at it from a fire or maintenance, you know, direction, you're including that access, the 20-foot access and utility easement in addition to the alley? Is that right? Is that how?
That's in addition. If I can go back to the aerial photograph. So yeah, fire access and primary access both of these lots. It's through this Cul-de-sac extension of Sixth Street, and the access would be along that access. So yeah. Drants is off of that and parallels the alley as well. There are some utility poles in that within the alley, so access will need to be improved on the other side.
Right.
Part of J.C. Trailer Park? Yeah. Several years ago, it was used as a trailer park.
That house there just immediately to the northwest there, is that... Has that been there? I'm thinking, is that the old...
Clinging Smith?
Is that the Clinging Smith?
It's Clinging Smith, yes. Yeah, that's... That's Clinging Smith's house, old house.
The building in... Within the subdivision, is that under the Ruiz's ownership, or is that what?
Yes. That's currently under Ruiz's ownership. So we are proposing that they improve the surface access into Lot 2 to the north, go back to the subdivision, or Lot... back to the subdivision, or Lot 1, improving this access with the compacted material that will support, you know, fire, fire trucks and their equipment to access that lot. With each of these lots as well, they will need to extend water and sewer services to each lot. And there are no sidewalks or sidewalk connections within this particular area. There are sidewalks along Lombard and Yellow Creek Road, but nothing that would connect up with these lots. So no sidewalks are being proposed with this subdivision. There are some recommendations that staff has in the report and I'll go through those for the record. So staff recommends approval of the Ruiz addition subject to the following conditions. Number one, install a water and sewer service to each of the lots per the direction requirements of the City Public Works Department prior to signing, the mayor signing the plat. Improve the primary access route from the existing cul-de-sac to Lot 1, including the access easement on Lot 2 with a compacted and graded material that will support and provide access for firefighting apparatus. This work shall be reviewed and approved by the Evanston Fire Department and the city engineer and completed prior to the signing of the plat. A certified reproducible Mylar copy of the final plat shall be provided to the city after the final plat's been recorded and a building permit will be issued once we receive that Mylar copy of the final plat. That's it.
Anything else we need to know?
No, that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Jacobson before we...
Can you go back to the old, to the aerial shot that we had?
You bet.
So the access going to that property is off of Yellow Creek, am I correct?
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
There's an extension on Sixth Street. So this is a public right of way, is it there?
But you can't get there from...
Another is a city-owned property.
What's that?
The area of the...
(laughing).
But that's, that's kind of a...
That's just like a cul-de-sac for Mary O'Temperley is what that is.
Yeah, it's not, you, you, no access to that, to that access off of Sixth Street. You have to come off of Yellow Creek.
You have to come off of Yellow Creek.
It is. Yes.
That cul-de-sac, I think what Mr. Ottley's talking about is that cul-de-sac that you see there just below Mary O'Temperley's house, there's no way to access that, that cul-de-sac off of Lombard or Sixth Street, only if you come farther to the south and come off of Yellow Creek. Is the only way you can get into that cul-de-sac.
That's correct.
And an invitation.
What's that?
And an invitation.
And an invitation. Maybe, I don't know.
And does the city currently keep that, keep that clear for...
City, yeah, the city maintains that.
You guys plow that cul-de-sac?
We do, because we run cars, shoot that out.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Let's, let's not have a question, your honor.
Okay. I think that's good. That's what I, look, I just wanted to make sure that access was adequate. I mean, I don't want to create a situation. It's their property. I recognize that and certainly they have the right to pursue this subdivision, but I just wanted to make sure that we've, and I have no question, but what we have looked into to make sure that adequate is, access is adequate so that we don't end up with some issues there.
That's what we looked at as city staff as well, is, that was the big question. If they subdivide it, do they have adequate access to that northern lot? It was subdivided previously with the Sepulveda addition and approved with access from that cul-de-sac to that greater lot, but what's the addition of that lot further to the north and that?
I think when that was...
We needed to look at that a little bit closer.
When that was the trailer park, the access through it was in front of there, to the north, the northwest corner of that map there up where, in front of Clingins Smith's house.
That's exactly where it was.
Yeah.
I lived on the corner.
You lived on the corner, is that what you said?
Yeah, I did.
Okay. Well, any questions before we move on? Is there an introduction on this resolution?
All you do is put a motion to pass.
Mr. Lynn, Mr. Welling's seconding. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? That's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments from departments? Chief Vanish, do you have anything more for us tonight?
Sir, I have anything tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. O'Neill, do you have anything for us?
Cowboys are 21-3. They play the Lobos tonight, so I'm happy.
Excellent. Excellent.
Seven.
So we got to get you home in time for the ballgame? Is that what we got to do?
I have plenty of time.
Okay. Mr. Parker?
No.
Not have that. Mr. Robinson, you have anything for us? Mr. Ethers?
No, sir.
Ms. Lim? Mr. Bowles?
Nothing, your honor.
Okay. Is there anyone here from the public? Anybody else that would like to address the council for any reason?
My anniversary, the Salt Lake City Cars and Oil Olympics.
Oh.
For a story, private...
Okay. Excellent. Cool. Well, if that's it, we'll adjourn. Thank you.
Go home, take care of yourself.